I'd like to call the March regular board meeting to order. And if you would, please silence your cellphones. And if you would, let the record show that all board members are here. And if you would, stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know we have some special recognition tonight, and so Dr. Ritter, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Mr. Ford, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's my great honor this evening to introduce our Coordinator of Health Services, Jeanne Graybill, and to recognize her for being named a Fellow of the National Academy of School Nurses. Jeanne, you want to come up? Jeanne has worked for Springfield Public Schools since 1991 and as our Coordinator of Health Services for over eighteen years. She's in her twenty-fifth year total in school nursing. Jeanne has been a past recipient of many nursing awards, too numerous to mention them all. But a few of the most notable are she was the first school nurse to receive the Chamber of Commerce Salute to Healthcare Award. She was named an American Cancer Society National School Nurse Fellow. She was a finalist for the Governor's First Lady Award. She received the Salute to Nurses Award for Advancement of Nursing. And an Everyday Hero Award from KY3 and the American Red Cross. Jeanne is also the mother of two very successful children, one of whom is a Springfield graduate. Jeanne is only the second Missourian to receive the NASN Fellow Honor. She will be inducted in June at the annual NASN Conference in Washington, DC. The purpose of this distinctive award is to recognize members of NASN whose achievements have made enduring, unique, and extraordinary contributions to the advancement of professional school nursing practice. NASN comprises a group of leaders who provide the vision and clinical expertise to advance the knowledge and skills of school nurses, promote the visibility of school nursing practice, influence policy development, contribute to research, and exemplify highly effective management skills in the delivery of effective health services in schools. Thank you, Jeanne, for everything you do for Springfield Public Schools and the advancement of your profession, and congratulations on this award.
You get to make a speech.
Oh, no. Thank you very much. It's been an honor to serve the district, and it just shows I'm really old, and I've been around a long time. But I love my job, I love what I do for the school district, and it's a pleasure to serve as Health Services Coordinator. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne. Congratulations from the district and the community. Got one more, Dr. Ritter?
I do, and I know the board doesn't have this on their agenda, but today Anita Kissinger received a state award as far as for outstanding instructional leadership, and I want to recognize her. So if she would come up, please. I had Steve and Peggy on her side to keep her from running away. But anyway, if she would come up. Anita, of course, everybody knows is outstanding, and really is in the heart of everything that we do as far as adult learning and really student learning. She was nominated by our staff, and I think it was Pam who nominated.
Staff Development.
Yeah, the Staff Development Team who nominated her for her efforts the past twelve years in district instructional leadership. Since taking over the department in 2001, Anita systematically improved professional learning by studying the research on best practices in education and working to create practices that support high-quality professional learning. Staff development programs Anita has implemented include whole faculty study groups, classroom walkthroughs, induction programs for beginning leaders, evolving leaders, and teachers step up, summer academies for teachers, summer leadership academies for district leaders, and continuous classroom improvement, among other initiatives. Anita began her career at Springfield Public Schools many years ago, if I may say twenty-six years ago, as a science teacher at Kickapoo. And also, am I right, a coach?
Yes.
Yes. Anita taught at Kickapoo until 1997, when she became a teacher in residence. She worked in this capacity until 2000, when she was made a Staff Development Specialist in 2001. She was named Director of Staff Development, and of course, ever since then, we've really benefited from her outstanding work. So I'm going to congratulate her for this special award, and I want to thank her and her staff for everything they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter. And one of the things that I reflected on as I thought about this honor, it is an honor for our school district, and I have been honored and blessed to have the opportunity to serve in a school district where we've had board members and leaders that understand that effective professional learning for our adults in the system is core to having an effective student learning system. And the teachers, the parents, the principals, and especially the students have and continue to challenge me every day to learn more, to do more, and to be more. And I'm very honored, because I received the blessing of being able to serve others. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve Springfield.
Congratulations, Anita. Well-deserved and earned, I know.
If you met her parents, you could understand her humility. Very humble.
Moving on, does any members have any modifications to the agenda? If not, we will proceed as presented. Under my report, it's several things tonight. Most of them are fairly quick, but first thing I want to do again, it's my honor to recognize those partners in education, those businesses that do so much for our kids every day, and have an opportunity to spotlight one of those here in just a minute, too. So we'd like to certainly recognize a few of the others. Arvest Bank, Gordmans, Kiwanis Club of Ozark Empire, McDonald's at West Sunshine, Noble Communications, Palin Music Praise Assembly, Pregnancy Care Center, Second Baptist Church, Southminster Presbyterian Church, Texas Roadhouse, and University Heights Baptist Church. And certainly thanks to all those businesses and organizations that help our kids every day. We are going to have kind of spotlighted one of our partnerships, and I'm going to turn it over to Josie McVale to introduce this month's partnership.
Thank you. Good evening. This month's Partner in Education highlight is the Council of Churches RSVP Reading Buddy Program, and they have been a district partner since 1997. And what they do is provide reading tutors for first, second, and third graders all across the district. Volunteers come in once a week, every week for an hour, and spend time working on literacy with those students, and those folks are fifty-five and older. Let's see, we currently have twenty-seven of our schools taking advantage of this opportunity, which means about two-hundred-and-fifty students are being served. To tell us some more is Carol Scott. She serves as the Education Coordinator for RSVP Reading Buddy.
I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for having me tonight. It's an honor to be able to present this program, because it's such a fun program. RSVP used to be called Retired and Senior Volunteers Program, but we want to be like AARP, so now we're RSVP. And we are a federal agency. We receive our funding through the Corporation for National and Community Service, and we are an operating agency of the Council of Churches. Our purpose is to find meaningful volunteer experiences for people fifty-five and older. And in 1997, one of the programs RSVP developed was the Reading Buddy Program. The volunteers, like Josie said, go once a week. They spend thirty minutes one-on-one time with a student. We started in one school. We started at Fairbank School with ten volunteers. Next year, we were in three schools. Today, we are in eight school districts, forty-three schools, twenty-seven in Springfield. We have a hundred and fifty-five volunteers, and we have a hundred in Springfield. Last year, we served three-hundred-and-thirty-five students. This year, I'm thinking probably total about four-hundred-and-fifty students. So we just keep growing. And the exciting thing is, it's March, and I keep getting calls, "I want to be a reading buddy." I'm going, "It's March. Do you want to wait till next fall?" No, I want to start now. I want to make a difference now. So these people, they're a lot of fun. They're great to work with. Springfield has been so helpful for us. Springfield provides retired reading teacher to be our trainer in the fall, so we do a training with our volunteers. And then in October, it's usually October the volunteers get started, and they work until May. Our goal had been to have about twenty visits in the school year, because they start in October. But last year, we averaged about twenty-six one-on-one visits, so we were happy that we could provide that many visits per student. The principals have been positive. I send out a survey in the spring to them, and last year, they reported that ninety-one percent of the students that worked with our volunteers showed improvement in their reading. But it's really more than reading improvement. It's improvement in their self-esteem, improvement in attendance. And one of the things the principals tell me that they like about RSVP volunteers is that they are consistent. If they say they're going to be there, they're going to be there. They're reliable. And because a lot of my volunteers are retired teachers, they go the extra mile. I have a lady that she did not retire from Springfield. I can't tell you where she retired from, but she's a reading specialist. Last year, she started at McGregor, and she decided she'd make up her own books for her students, and the teachers were okay with it. So she did a story about sharks, and she took a ruler, and they read about the biggest shark and the smallest shark, and she had the little boy walking down the hall measuring the sharks and the sizes and comparing, and the teachers were coming out of their classrooms going, "What are you doing out here?" So, you know, these people go the extra mile. They try to make it fun. They enjoy sitting next to a child and encouraging them to be good readers. One of my teachers, she's actually a fourth-grade teacher, and we do like to work with first through third graders, but I will work, you know, if a teacher wants one of our volunteers, and I have one, I will not turn them down. She had two little boys, and they spent all their independent reading time trying to figure out how they cannot read. They looked out the window, and they were messing in their desk. So she took her reading buddy and assigned them to the reading buddy, and she said it was two months, and the little boys were asking to go to the library, and they were looking for series to read. So I think a lot of positive things happen when you sit down with a little boy or a little girl and read with them. I wanted to tell you one thing that RSVP does for the schools that we work with, is we provide pizza parties in the spring to recognize the students and tell them, "You've done a good job." So RSVP buys the pizza, invite the volunteers to come in, and we sit down and have a little party at lunchtime. But the most important thing to me is that we have been able to provide books for each child that's in the program, so they get a free book, and we encourage them to read that over the summer. These volunteers are positive. They have time, they have experience, and they're willing to share that with the kids. And the last thing I'd like to share with you about RSVP Reading Buddies is that they're fifty-five and older, they don't have children in the elementary schools. They might have grandkids, but they don't have children anymore in the elementary schools. But they are in your schools every day, and they see how important and how wonderful the education system is here in Springfield. So when it's bond issue time, they're going to go, and they're going to remember the positive experiences they've had in the public schools here. And so I thank you for allowing us to share our volunteers with you for the last, this will be our thirteenth year. We're so excited that we can do it, and we hope we just keep growing. If you have any questions about the program, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Questions?
It's not a question, just a comment. I have several friends who are reading buddies, and it's really the highlight of their week.
It is.
And so to see someone get so excited about being a part of a child's life is really encouraging, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
It's a great, good, great program. I have several just reminders for everybody and some announcements, I guess. Thursday night, it's not on your calendar, the Rose Banquet. Hopefully, all of you will be able to attend. I know that's, I've filled several people. This is between this and graduation, this is one of the most fun things that we get to do, is see the energy of the top graduates new to the school. So hopefully, six o'clock at Drury, hopefully you'll be able to make it, and if you can, let Teresa know and make sure we're there. The second one is put on your calendar. As you all know, we were 2011 Distinction and Performance School District, and April 5th, there is a distinction in performance banquet at Drury also, at the O'Reilly Center, six o'clock, that will recognize districts around the area that have achieved the Distinction and Performance Award. I'm not sure how many will be there. April 5th, election day.
And if you're interested in going-
And we decided not to meet that day, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any of you are interested in going, just contact Kathy. Contact Kathy. We have ten slots.
And I know there was three-hundred-and-thirty districts across the state that achieved that distinction, so they're having these all across the states, all across the state of Missouri. Did a little thing, you probably saw at your desk, cookbooks. Those are, those came from, and I just, it's not the cookbook part of it, but I did an assembly at Pittman Elementary School two weeks ago, and the fifth-grade teachers, Mrs. Brown and Ms. Martin, and the principal, Ms. Batson, there's a unit in her fifth-grade class on business, and so they were creating, raising money, creating this cookbook, doing the marketing program, developing the marketing spiel, and after the assembly, I mean, they were on us like right there with their thing, and it was just so cool to go down and watch them go through the production and marketing and develop their thing that I said, "Give me seven of them."
You bought this first year?
I bought, you're welcome. I just thought it was so cool, so I just, and I don't know how many they did, but I mean, it was truly, these kids were engaged, and I mean, they were all over this. And so I just thought it'd be fun. I just, not a huge relevant thing, but I thought it was really cool to see the Pittman kids really doing that and learning something real and practical. Do want to report on March 7th, that the area board presidents met at one of our spring meetings that we typically do. Talked about several things, but primarily, the program was the Commissioner, Nina Castro. She was our speaker, and so she came down that night and spoke to us for almost an hour and a half. And so we had the opportunity to talk about a lot of the things that are going on in the state, issues that concerning the State Board of Education and her with respect to different issues. And so it was just really a good discussion that we were able to do. She spoke the next day at the chamber, which Ms. Callen was there, and really got an opportunity to hear what her vision for the state is, and the school board, the State Board of Education's vision is for the state of Missouri. And so hopefully, at the end of the meeting, we'll get an opportunity, I'm going to talk about that a little bit, at least the education reform thing that they're proposing, and have that discussion, but don't want to do that now. Last thing is just a reminder of meetings in April, and I thought I wanted to do that just, our meetings in April, I'm just, April 14th is our special meeting that we'll have. I think we have one issue that we need to address that night, but that will be our real, two issues, okay, two issues that we will address, but that will also be our reorganization meeting to install two new board members and elect officers. So that will be that meeting on the 14th. Then on the 19th, will be our regular combined study and regular meeting, so put that on your calendar at 5:30. And then the 21st, at four o'clock, will be our budget, really our first budget meeting, that will start looking at the 2011-12 budget. So put those all on your calendar, and we'll have a busy, what looks like to be a busy April. Okay. Enough of my report. Dr. Ritter, super tennis report.
Just a couple of things. First of all, the meeting with a couple of principals, it's very obvious, they're getting really sharp focus, limiting their priorities, limiting their goals, and very strong data-driven decision-making going on at the sites. It's really exciting. And what's interesting is, is as they're sharpening that, they're getting better attendance by staff at the sites, and they're also finding better attendance by students. And so I really think the engagement and the charge, part of that's P2G, part of it's continuous improvement, it's really all coming together really very nice. So I'm seeing that in the visits I'm doing to the sites. One thing we found out today, the calendar discussions were going out end of the year, and communications amongst kids can happen in five minutes. I mean, literally, five minutes. Just drop the, just drop a note, boom, and it's all over the place. And so we need to start, and we don't need to start, it's just happening, and it's that fast. So supposedly, they're not having their cellphones on.
Yeah.
Sure. But anyway, I just want to highlight that a little bit. I do want to go into something that the community has started, that did not start in the schools. And so Mr. Manus, if you'd come up, please, and talk about community's civility resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter. Well, I hope it was not with a sense of irony that Dr. Ritter asked me to present the civility project.
Lot of training involved.
You have a resolution. I'll give you a little background on the civility project. Louise Wall from the Community Foundation has been active with us, and Dr. Ritter's been obviously active with the committee looking at this. But more than a year ago, the Good Community Committee, an informal cross-section of community leaders began discussing and learning how a growing trend of incivility had turned so ugly that it stifled community participation. The committee's goal became one of restoring civic engagement to the democratic process. And it would appear that support is growing across the community for this initiative, based on the responses of the 2010 Ozarks Regional Social Capital Survey, in which eighty-eight point nine percent of the people responded that they strongly agree or agree with the statement that civility and politics is important for a healthy democracy. So with that background and with the initiative of the Good Community, there's a civility project taking place in which a resolution is being offered in support for this activity, which I believe the resolution is with the board. And have it at your place. And also, we would like, there are ten tenants of the civility project, themes which you can see appearing now on the PowerPoint, that we, that the committee felt like are the most important tenants to civility. Obviously, good themes that we incorporate our learning across the system and be involved with in this community initiative. And Dr. Ritter asked me, in addition to sharing with you some background on the civility project that we promote, and will be working with the city and the Community Foundation to promote upcoming informational workshops and conferences, one specifically the MSU Public Affairs Conference, where there'd be a number of presenters related to this particular topic. So a little plug for that upcoming event. And Dr. Ritter, would you like to share some additional?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, the presenter's going to be Dr. Forney, and I have his book here, so I'll just pass that around, and he will really be kicking off the conference by giving a presentation at the Public Affairs Conference. I don't have the exact date on that, do you?
It's up here, 10:30 through 11:45.
Okay, on April 13th.
April 13th.
Anyway, the, what's interesting in my forums, when I met with the parents, with the students, with the senior citizens, and with the teachers, without question, they all felt it was necessary. The one that really came across stronger than all of them is the kids. The students really feel with the technology, there's just a lack of communication, and really, the communication's getting very harsh. And in fact, a lot of put-down type of language is happening in the text messaging, and in the, not that much in email, but text messaging, the Twitter, the Facebook, primarily Facebook. And so they were wanting to, for us as a system, to support this, and this is my student advisory, across all high schools. And I was really surprised by that, but when they brought out and had that conversation as to why they support it, it made sense. And so I think this is something that we're going to take very seriously, and really, through the kids, through the students, I think we need to allow them to be able to bring this to task through the student councils, especially in the high school, and see how they can make it part of their expectations as far as communications are concerned, relationships are concerned. So what we need from you tonight, if it's okay, is just basically, we don't need a vote. We just need to simply say that the board did have a chance to look at it, and that the board, in every way possible, will support this, and we'll move forward with this, and then eventually submit the resolution to Louise Wall, I believe it is. Any questions?
Ms. Callen?
Mark, could you outline who the partners are in this project, or do you have a list?
I do not have, I would be hesitant to name all of them. I know Dr. Ritter's been meeting with them, and probably can identify them.
I could give you some of them. I know David Stoffler from the newsletter's there. Brian Fogel is there. Missouri State is there through Dr. Stout, Michael Stout, and a couple other from Missouri State as well. Drury is there, so the universities, colleges, evangel is there. Of course, we are there. And then private business is there. There's a, I don't think it's US Bank, I think it's Empire. One of the banks is there. And so we have, we meet about once every three weeks, and eventually, and this is where these themes came from, is basically from that committee.
Has there been any discussion? I know you talked about different forms of communication, and it seems like blogging has become one of the most uncivil forms.
I don't think I'm violating any discussion on that, but there was a heavy discussion, at least two or three times in our committee, and we had KY3, I think that was part of the Good Community discussion as well. KY3 was there as well as David, Dave Stoffler, and they had a great conversation about that. And KY3 has gone to the point of where the blogger has to register before they can blog. And so that helped clean it up quite a bit. And Mr. Stoffler said that they were looking into that as a possible scenario as well. Really did, was kind of hesitant, but through that conversation, it really, it was interesting, by the way, the research that you referred to, Mr. Lee, how surrounding communities, we're talking ten to eight to ten counties, all feel that there's a real need for civility. So it was kind of interesting.
City and county are involved in the process, too?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, hospitals.
Any other comments or thoughts about this?
Anybody really opposed to it?
Anybody okay with me signing off on the?
I haven't been called every name in the book.
Can we get some tickets to some of the bloggers on the recent campaign articles? They might enjoy the conference.
Okay, everybody got a consensus of the board, okay? Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Mark.
Also, my last, you might remember about a year ago, am I right? It's about a year ago where, of course, Steve Smei, you might remember him, outstanding, outstanding gentleman, headed up our food service, and really was becoming a very strong personnel for Airmark. And they were using Steve in many different ways to really bring the brand that we have here to other parts of the country. Well, anyways, Steve eventually passed because of cancer. And they started a scholarship fund, and so I thought I would just bring it to the board's attention, to the community's attention, that for the second year now, they're going to, Airmark's going to give a $5,000 scholarship to a Hillcrest student, am I right? A Hillcrest student. And so I just thought I'd bring that to the board's attention. And so it's a pretty nice, very nice scholarship, so. Anyway, just keep Steve in your mind, in your thoughts, and his family, but all- but also, again, a big thank you to Airmark for, for doing that. Appreciate it.
Many thanks to Airmark. You're just a great partner in lots of respects with this district. So, thank you for all you do as company and individuals that you guys do. You guys are great, great to work with. That all, Dr. Ritter? That's all, yep? Great. Moving on to informational item. We have no comments for agenda items. Proposed end date for June 2011 information. Dr. Ritter? Yours?
Dr. Harrell's?
Calendar man.
I was double-checking there.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. You should have in front of you potential proposals for the end date of school for 2010, 2011. As we are all well aware, 2010 and 11 was an interesting year for weather, for us. Lived my entire life in this area. I've never been under a blizzard warning before. And so, that was certainly a change. We have missed six school days this year, which is unusual. We look at the last fifteen years, the highest number is zero. We have missed no school days on five of those occasions. And so, for us to miss six truly is a rarity. With that situation, the current calendar would have the last day of school as early as Friday, May twenty-seventh, without any snow days. Clearly, we've had snow days this year, which puts us at the projected latest end date of Tuesday, June the seventh, if we make up all six days and keep the current calendar. We are hoping at this point, being in the second week of March, that we are through with snow days, but we certainly understand that is still a potential, especially for the rest of this month, so we'll continue to keep an eye on it. But as you look at this presentation, you'll see option A, has us maintain Tuesday, June seventh, as the final day of the 2010, 2011 school year. Summer school then would begin the very next day, on Wednesday, June sixth, giving us no prep time between the end of school and the beginning of summer school. And then, summer school would end on Wednesday, July the sixth, which is two days beyond the Fourth of July holiday. Option B would again maintain the end of da- of school as Tuesday, June seventh, and then would have a starting summer school on Thursday, June ninth, which at least give us one day to make preparations, get supplies to buildings for teachers who are going from the regular school year to summer school to have some level of preparation. But we again would be ending in three days beyond the July fourth holiday. Option C for consideration would be that we'd end the 2010, 2011 school year on Friday, June the third, and start summer school then on Monday, June the sixth, which would give us a weekend to work on preparing buildings, those individual classrooms, and give those teachers opportunity to prepare at least a little bit prior to school, summer school starting on Monday, the sixth. This would also allow summer school to end prior to the Fourth of July holiday weekend. It's important to note that the total number of contact days for students in this particular school year, if we were to look at this option, would reduce from one hundred and seventy-six to one hundred and seventy-five. And then, this, if this option was reviewed and, and accepted, then the teachers' support staff would have one less required contract workday, and nine and ten-month food service and transportation employees would have the option to participate in organizational, or excuse me, in organized departmental training on Monday, June the sixth, or they could take that day off without pay. The state of Missouri does require one hundred and seventy-four school days, contact days, as well as a thousand and forty-four hours. Our current contract, or, my tongue is not working today, I'm sorry. My, our current calendar is one hundred and seventy-six days and a thousand and ninety hours. So, we do schedule two days more than the required, as well as forty-six hours further than the required. If we facilitate option C, we'd ask that the board allow us to utilize April twenty-second as a full-day student attendance day. So, five of the six snow days then would need to be made up at the end of the school year. Because April twenty-second is scheduled to be a professional learning and, and work-half day for teachers with no students, the teachers would have the flexibility to complete those half-day contract hours between March twenty-eighth and April twenty-ninth of this particular school year. And that would be a site decision on exactly how that would be made up. With the five of the six snow days that we would be making a student attendance, those would then be on April twenty-second, May thirty-first, June first, June second, and June third. And again, allowing us to start summer school on Monday, June the sixth. Do you have any questions about these three options or this proposal?
Questions for Dr. Harrell. Ms. Callen?
Is there a requirement for days for summer school? How many days summer school has to?
There's a requirement, number of hours in order to count for credit at the high school level.
And that would, however you do?
That would be the minimum number.
Okay. And that would be, what we're looking at is the minimum number, however you?
And that's what we plan for annually, is the minimum number for credits, which is sixty hours for half-credit, one hundred and twenty for a full.
And approximately, how many students are we assuming will be taking summer school classes? And how many teachers will be teaching summer school classes?
That's a difficult estimate this year on the number of students, because we're reducing the number of offerings. I don't know that we have the number. We can do that, we don't have those with us.
Five thousand though? Haven't we had about five thousand students or something?
We have in the past. We've had upwards of six thousand or close to. But again, we won't have that number this year because we're greatly reducing the number of offerings.
And if I can help you at the high school level, we're planning on having core classes, and we're planning on having, I, I believe it was twenty classes at the high school level.
Is there a recommendation from the administration?
There will be a recommendation from the administration.
Yes, there is. It's option C is our recommendation.
Ms. Callen?
I don't think it's ideal ever to shorten the school year, although we've had to do that now for next year in planning for financial reasons. But I think even with the number of students being reduced who are participating in summer school, it's not just their schedule, but it's the staff's schedule. It's the coordination of buildings. I mean, it's just the logistics of trying to really shift gears in a matter of twenty-four hours. And I'm concerned really with what our attendance would be like those two days of that last week. Certainly, at the high school level, they would probably be okay because those kids are taking finals and have that incentive, yeah. But I, I would support option C, and I'll have to say that the communication I've had from a few staff members today, I mean, what time did this go out? Ten, yeah. I've had, a- a- and like you said, from students, apt to give more credence to the staff perspective on this one. But I'd be supportive of C. And I know we're not voting on this tonight, but I think it would be really helpful if we could get, you know, a pretty good consensus of the board, because, you know, families are making plans, staff are making plans. I mean, we know that there's always a chance of another inclement weather day, but hopefully, we're out of that.
According to Farmer's Almanac, we're supposed to get a big one, ten to March.
Well, hopefully, it'll come during spring break or something.
Yeah. Well, I do think it's, I'm, I'm, I'm just going to say, I think it is important to give the community as, as much notice, particularly on April twenty-second, since that is coming up fairly quickly. If we're, if we're going to use that, even if we don't, and I don't think we need, we can approve this tonight just from a timing standpoint, because it just came out today. But I, I do think from a practical standpoint, just the fact of letting the community know that, you know, we're probably going to approve it in, in April, so peo- they can plan for that, that day on April twenty-second, we're going to be in school, and then even for the last two days, six and seven. I, I just think it's important that we make that communication, even maybe if we, since we're not going to officially approve it tonight. I think they need to know that. So, Dr. Prater, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I think you both said, and I think the logistics of this makes so much sense. I'm never in favor of giving up a day, but I think we do need to send a message to the community that this looks like what we will approve. But since it hasn't had twenty-four-hour notice, we can't vote on it tonight, so.
Is the rest of the board okay, comfortable with that? Consensus on this, at least to this point? That we can let the community know that that's the plan? Okay. Because I do think that's very important. Give them a heads up.
Yeah, we'll vote on April fourteenth.
That's correct. It'll be April fourteenth, it'll come back as an action item.
Unofficial, official, official.
Official, unofficial.
Okay. Thank you.
Pending board approval.
Pending board approval. Okay. Back on track here. Couple items we took on March first, of course, school calendar, which we approved, and Glendale, going to action items for separate consideration, engineering and architectural modification for air conditioning project. Mr. Wap, please. Robertson Elementary.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. The action item before you this evening is for the Robertson Elementary Air Conditioning Project. We advertised that project in the be- middle of February. We received bids and opened them on March ninth. The bid tab is attached, attachment A. We did receive three bids on the project. All of the bids came in above what our projected costs were for this project and for what we would typically see in the Springfield area. We anticipated to see numbers in the one-point-three to one-point-five range for this type of project. We're in the progress of analyzing why the bids came in as they did. Having meetings, discussions with the, with the apparent low bidder, we're able to ask questions. Remember, we get a lump-sum bid, so we're only pervy to the information that the bidders are willing to share with us. We also are having discussions with the engineers and looking at our specifications to see what we might be able to adjust in that to make it a more competitive bid. We anticipate putting this bid back out on the street pending action tonight, that we could get it back out on the street within the next couple of weeks to save our schedule. And with that, it would be our recommendation that the board would reject all the bids for the Robertson Elementary Air Conditioning Project.
Questions for Mr. Wap. Dr. Prater?
Scott, is this project similar in scope to some of the other air conditioning projects we've had? What, probably Roundtree might be the closest?
Actually, this is a, a water source heat pump system that we are looking. So, this would actually be more in line with what we put in Hickory Hills, although this was a monopipe system where Hickory Hills was a two-pipe, but it's that same type of system, so that's what we are looking at.
And, and, and you're basing the overbid on the amount of square footage that's, that's involved here and what we've seen in the past, based on square footage, cost per square foot?
Yes. And, and we can only use square footage to a point. We also have to look at the number of tons of cooling, and there are some variations specifically with the site itself and those things. So, there's a lot of variables, but as a rough estimate, we do look at our cost per square foot. The, the board may remember back when we awarded the bids for the Jared and Reed project, we're right in the same price range, just to give you an example.
And square footage in those buildings is twice this.
Ms. Callen?
I, I know that we, that this was designed to use the geothermal.
Yes.
Feature. Is that adding to the cost of the project?
It, it's hard to say in fairness. I don't believe that that is the main reason why we're seeing the high cost. Being a single-pipe versus a two-pipe system could have some variable, but not to this level. So, I, we believe there's some other things that are happening, which we're looking at, so.
Like what kind of things?
Well, I mean, we're looking at the specifications to see a- as far as what was happening in the bidding climate, who was ac- actually bidding the equipment, who was bidding some of the different components, find out what kind of questions or issues they might have had. Were there things in the design that were unclear to the contractors that can raise prices? There, there's a lot of different variables, so it's kind of a, a big project to dig down into. And as I said, we're limited to the information that the contractors and suppliers are willing to give us.
Are you hopeful that we're going to find a half-million dollars in those questions?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah.
Definitely. I'm confident.
If, if there's a good thing here, the only good thing is all the bids were really close. So, everybody understood the project. But now, we need to change the project.
So, we, we are gaining information as we talk to individuals and putting it together. That's why I'm confident that we'll be able to make some adjustments and get it back out on the street within the next couple of weeks.
Question?
Just in general?
Ms. Callen?
Is the, I know, over the past few years, we've really benefited from the bidding climate being to, to our favor. Are you starting to sense that that may be changing a bit as?
Not yet.
Okay.
I, I think it's still a good bidding climate. I, there is other work out there. MSU is doing some projects at this time, but the market's not overburdened at this point.
These are all local companies, are they not?
Yes.
I'd move to reject the bid on the recommendation of staff.
Have a motion for Dr. Prater, and second by Ms. Tui, to the board reject the bids for Robertson Elementary Engineering and Architectural Modifications for Air Conditioning. Any other comments? Dr. Coleman?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Good luck. Moving on to treasurer's report.
Thank you. Before I do my usual presentation on the treasurer's report, I just wanted to address one piece of education for the board, and that would entail the fund balance or percentage, the reserve percentage, and how it's calculated. The reserve percentage, as the board is probably aware, is a ratio of the fund balance to the total expenditures. And what I've identified here are the major funds that we use. General, food service, activity, teacher, capital project, bond fund, and the debt fund. What DESI does when they calculate the reserve percentage is they use the expenditures and the fund balance for the general fund, the food service fund, the activity fund, and the teacher fund. And what we do is we use the expenditures and fund balance for the general fund, the teachers' fund, and the capital projects' fund. Now, why is there a difference? We do not use the food service fund because we run the food service fund as a separate entity. We ask them to maintain a positive fund balance, but don't ask them to increase the fund balance. So, they have about ten million dollars of expenditures and a low fund balance. So, we don't really view that as money available to the district or, or not available to the district. Same with the activity fund. We view that as funds that are for the schools and for the students. That's money typically generated by those, by the students in the schools, and we don't use that for operating funds for the school district. And then, also, on the capital projects' fund, DESI does not report those as two separate funds. They ask the districts to report them as one fund, the capital fund. What we've done is we've broken that out between capital projects and the bond fund. And the capital projects' fund, because- and the capital projects' fund, because we have control over that, we want to include that in our calculation for the reserve percentage. Any questions on?
So the three green arrows makes up the 10% that our policy says of the $200 million budget that we go approximately.
Right, and when you hear us say operating funds, that's what we're talking about, of those three funds. We have control over those three funds.
So Steve, the discrepancy then is that?
Well, not discrepancy, just difference?
Difference, difference. Well, it's interpretation. It's about 7% reserve compared to the 10%. That's what you're trying to point out.
Right. You know, like we break in the bond fund and the two funds, and DESI only has the districts report them as one fund, similar thing where we track them as three separate funds, but when we report it to DESI, combined one fund.
But our policy hasn't changed, 10%?
The smaller districts who actually do use those us to do it.
It was in place one district, but I agree with it 100%. What do we have control over? And those three funds we have control over. You know, one example, the capital, we have control over whether we leave money in that fund or not leave money in that fund, so it should be used in calculating our reserve percentage.
So when you see the fund balances, the comparisons that we see that area schools got 25% fund balance or 30%, I've seen as high as 40 across the state, which seems like, is it, it's not, is it apples and apples? Is it, it's the DESI number?
Right, so ours is even lower when you're comparing us to them. Ours is even lower. Ours is about 7.5%, I believe.
But those are apples to apples when you start looking at what DESI shows and compared to what our policy is with respect, okay? Just want to make sure.
And now, looking at the financial statement as we do every month, this is the February financial statement. The combined tax collections for the month were up $815,000, which is a nice increase. Fiscal year-to-date, we're up $2.7 million, and as I always do, kind of later in the month, I have the subsequent month's information, and for March, we're down a couple hundred thousand dollars. But once again, year-to-date, we are up a fair amount. On sales tax collections for the month, we were up $136,000. Fiscal year-to-date, we're up $370,000, and we should be seeing this month's numbers in about a week or so. As always, total revenue, the 80% of the budget is on the right side of the 78.73 that we were at this time last year, and on the expenditure side, the 53.67 is on the right side of the 54.82% at this time last year. Any questions?
Question, Ms. Callen?
Just a clarification, when you say up, you mean from the budget projections, right? Or what?
From the budget.
From the budget.
Right.
I do not mean up from the projection that I gave the board recently on the $3.5 million.
Right, so this would all be included?
It would all be included, yes. I have no information, it's just time to change that.
This is just as we anticipated?
Correct.
Based on the most recent information we've received? And again, it's up from a very conservative budget?
Yes.
Projection, and particularly, probably anything that has to do with the state, comparing those numbers to anything we saw four or five years ago would be much less. I mean, I think that those, those are the numbers that really are making a difference. I think, you know, they're up from really bad figures in the last two years, so. But it's, you know, it's good news.
Question, Dr. Prater?
Yeah, and the other thing, I think that can't be overemphasized, is that our expenditures, as the board pushed administration for, are down year-to-date, 1.6 million. So the concern is we're spending and wasting money, but it looks like you've toe the line as we would have hoped, so.
Questions for Ms. Jones? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Callen, and second by Dr. Prater, that the board approve the treasures report as presented. Any questions or comments? Mr. Hosmer?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Item number 10, routine action items. I would entertain a motion to approve the routine action items as submitted.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Callen, and second by Dr. Prater, that the board approve each of the routine action items as submitted. Any questions or comments? Dr. Coleman?
Aye.
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 Moving on, general consent items. I would entertain a motion to approve those.
Okay.
Motion by Ms. Twitty, and second by Ms. Callen, that the board approve each of the recommendations submitted by administration in general consent items. Mr. Hosmer?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Computers are slow tonight. Mercy. Comments from the public, we do have one speaker. The Board of Education will allow comments on topics not related to prudent agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes for each speaker and will be timed. It's inappropriate to address this board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district officer. First speaker is Carl Hart.
It's coming. Good evening, Dr. Ritter and members of the Board of Education. Thank you for not closing down the public comment section. Got a one-liner out of this book, and I won't name the student, but what they said was decimals are really important. It's a ninth grader from McGregor, and it's very appropriate for my presentation tonight. I wanted to, I thought the CU, I mean, the city of Springfield was going to make a presentation on TIPS and tax abatements, but I understand it's rescheduled, so I had planned to coordinate with that. I just want to draw your attention to TIPS and tax abatements once again, and I titled it "Look on Your Doorstep." And I like to relate a little story about the Hope Diamond. Was the largest diamond for many, many years that had ever been found. This gentleman wanted to search the world for diamonds. He went to Africa, he went to all the different places of the world, didn't find anything significant, came back to his home in Hope, Arkansas, was looking, sitting on the fireplace, and noticed a glimmer, and that's the story of the Hope Diamond. You have a similar situation, opportunity. I want to be totally objective. I do not want to bring any developer or any person's name into this discussion. I want to keep it totally objective. I've chosen two units of measure. A million dollars of increase, very important word, increase in property market value, and then another unit, 100 million. All right, I've hotlined this so we don't have to work through the math. On 1 million commercial property, that equates to $11,992 of taxes. So on 100 million, that's $1,199,200. Those are base numbers. Now, TIPS and tax abatements work slightly differently. TIPS, tax increment financing. So we've multiplied it out. TIPS for 23 years, a million-dollar figure is $275,816. 100 million, 27 million, $581,600. Okay, so TIPS aren't as popular as tax abatements. There's only two that I know of. Tax abatements, you know, they're kind of been split in parts, 50% for the first 10 years, 7, 50, I mean, 100% for the first 10 years, 50 or 75% for the next 15. So on a $1 million property increase for a tax abatement for the total of 25 years is $209,860. On 100 million, it's $20,986,000. So on 100 million dollars of tax abatements, rounded off, you're losing almost $1 million a year. Now, I will not name them, but I've got three tax abatements in mind that total $95 million. And they are just the tip of the iceberg. So I'll let you do your research on the actual tax abatements and TIPS. I'm just trying to inform and pique your curiosity. Let me be very strong on this statement. It is time for the city of Springfield to step up to the plate and become a greater partner in education. I love all the partners in education that come forth, but they need to step up. We all want good-paying jobs and economic development for our city. The Chamber of Commerce and most everyone agrees that a superb school system would help accomplish that goal. So this is for your information only, and so let you do your own homework. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Moving on to comments from the board. Legislative report. I have a stack here of thoughts. I think Dr. Ritter's probably got some too, and I don't, not, I mean, this is just more kind of an update of what's going on with the circus in Jeff City. I know one of the bills that's come up that is kind of a concern right now is the funding bill, which is dealing with the $189 million stimulus money that they're trying to figure out what to do with, and it's being held up in the Senate at this point, and threats of filibuster and all the stuff about, just send it back. Send the $189 million back, and that, right now, that's the only way that there's going to be flat funding for education, is if the $189 billion is built into the, to the budget or the formula. And the thought they're thinking is, well, let's give it back to the federal government, we don't want it, but which will reduce the debt? Well, it's going to go to Kansas is where it's going to go, or it's going to go to Iowa or Illinois, so it's not like it's going to do anything, so I don't know what's going to happen with that. I know that we've talked to the senators that, you know, fund it, I mean, it's, your motives may be good with respect to debt reduction, but this isn't going to do it, because it's not going to end up in Washington anyway. So I don't know what will happen with that one, but it's already gone through the House, so I, you know, who knows with that? One good piece of thing that came out is they've charter schools, which has been talked about pretty heavily, they've pretty much passed a bill through committee which is pushing charter schools out to 2014 with language that pretty much puts it under the school board authorization. So that's a good thing that they're not gonna, they're going to delay the expansion of the charter schools, which is a good thing since they're not working anyway. So, you know, at least we got some time there, but I, you know, I can tell you it won't go away. It's going to be out there from here on out. Another one that came up today, and I don't know if Steve, if you have any information on the discussion about increasing transportation? They're talking about putting another $35 million back into transportation. Now, I don't know if that'll happen or not, but that's what they're talking about, so. And probably the biggest bill that's out there is the House Bill 628, which there is the, let's see, what they, what do they call it?
T-
No, I won't talk about that one. Tenure reform bill. House Bill 628, which is being talked about, which was just pretty much a disaster when it, when it came out.
Who was the sponsor of that bill?
Dick House, the chairman of the committee.
The chairman of the education committee?
Mr. Warrensberg.
No. And teacher reform is their number-one priority right now, tenure reform. So I, you know, whether they get it or not, I don't know, but I know that there's been significant changes to that bill over the last week, week and a half. Much, I mean, I mean, the first bill had, you had to rank every teacher in your district from 1 to 1,700. Right down the order. I mean, it's just nuts. And so, a lot of things got changed in the bill. MSBA has been very, very active in getting a lot of that language out, because at the primary thing was happening was total taking away local control. It was taking it away from the local school districts for anything from evaluations to this decisions were being taken out of our hands. So I think we've got a lot of that back in or changed so that that, you know, I don't know if it'll, what's going to happen, but at least the bill's totally changing, and...
Was this the bill that MSBA testified in favor of?
And, and I'll be honest, we, we took some heat on it. But we also, what didn't come out in the media was we supported one piece of it and opposed everything else, and that wasn't talked about and at least reported. And so, we, we had presented testimony, 11 pages were the testimony in opposition to a whole bunch of these pieces. And what's interesting is right now, MSB is the only organization in the state that's at the table, working with Dick House to change the bill. So it, that's it, we're the only ones, MSBA, and so hopefully we're able to get, I mean, there's discussions going on, I know, but Dick House has worked directly with MSBA very closely on trying to get a bill that's doable. I mean, it'd be pleasant, but it's doable. I'm not, you know, I, I, it's, so, I don't know where it's going, but...
It's going to come out.
It's going to come out of committee next week, I think, tomorrow?
Is there a fiscal note attached to this? And if so, because there's always costs if you were to change anything as to how schools are going to administer it, so have they identified any costs?
I have not seen a fiscal note on it. That's part of it, but I have not seen it.
So it's philosophical versus practical?
What they're trying to do is satisfy Dick House, but I shouldn't say it that way.
Well-
Yes, they are. Anyway, they're going to put it out, but they know it's not going to go anywhere. I think the final issue related to teachers is going to be teacher effectiveness, that Senate Bill 13, Pierce's bill, and I think that's eventually what's going to happen. They're going to take a year to look at it, and they're putting together a committee, and so I don't think there's going to be any kind of action that's going to get through the Senate and pass the governor related to anything tied to House Bill 628.
Well, I guess more in thinking that these start out as philosophical approaches, but they really be- but they really become unfunded mandates if they take on any leg at all. And so to me, to, to push them toward a fiscal response, fiscal note to this, I think would be interesting.
And they, they promised that they wouldn't increase any kind of rules or regulations, and they're putting all kinds of regulations out there with this bill. And so it's really going against the promise, so I, I really don't think it's going to go far.
The fiscal note will be part of it. They just haven't got there yet. And I don't even, honestly, I don't know if they'll even get to the point of a fiscal note if they get past the philosophical issues. But fiscal note on the first one was, had to be just ridiculous. I just can't imagine it being, just, but who knows? So that one's still out there. Another one just came up, you talked, you mentioned open enrollment. Yeah, there, there's a bill that's being proposed now for open enrollment. It's, it, it's not truly open enrollment, but it's basically, it's, if it's a duck and it quacks, you know. Basically, it is allowing students that live close to a school in another district to transfer to that adjoining district because they're closer to the other school. And then the district, the sending district would have to pay the tuition to the other school. You know, I don't know if, I, I just, I thought in my case, when I, where I grew up, when I went to Rogersville, I was closer to Glendale than I was to my high school. So theoretically, I could have, this would be, I would go to Glendale.
It gets closer to Rod, to Republic, the new high school than to.
And so then they could transfer to that district.
So the district wouldn't have to be unaccredited, there wouldn't have to be any reason.
I think it doesn't accreditation whatsoever or space or anything. It's convenience. So I, I don't know where it's going.
It's not going to get out of committee.
I don't know that it will go anywhere, but it's just another one of those chips away.
Realtors could build near, or developers could develop near boundaries, and they could.
Yeah, and you'd have the right to, to go to that school. The only other one I, that I want to talk, and I don't know where it's going to go, but the whole issue, and, and I'm not as familiar with this one as Dr. Ritter is, dealing with Tabor, the taxpayer bill rights. And I bring that up only because it, it's out there. I don't know where it will go. And I guess one of the reasons I bring it up is because it's being sponsored by local, local rep here. And so that concerns me a little bit with respect to the whole capping of the state appropriations and what that will do. I, I don't know if it's got legs, but it's the third year, or fourth year, or third or fourth year in a row that it's come up. And I'm sure it will continue to come up, but. There's a lot going on right now in Jeff, so I don't know what's going to happen. It seems to have gotten, I don't know if it's less crazy or not, but it seems to have slowed down. It's, it's, not much is going on. It'll be spring break or spring recess for them next week, so we're safe for a few days, and so. Okay. Any other legislative, Dr. Ritter, anything you want to bring up legislatively?
That covered everything I had.
Future issues, any future issues to bring up? I do have one, just put on your calendar also. MSBA regional meeting for our region is April twenty-sixth in Stratford. If any of you want to attend that. I don't know if I can go to that or not. It's my anniversary, so I'll have to see how, I'd probably a no on that one. At least that would be a smart no. But April twenty-sixth at Stratford. Any other future issues?
No, not really. The, of course, we're always looking forward to the end of the legislation, which is May the seventh, I think it is, or something like that. I'm going to celebrate by being out of town, and my son graduates from law school that same day, so in a way, it's kind of a oxymoron.
The, the last thing I wanted to bring up, and, and, and this is more just to broach the subject and put it on the table and see the board's pleasure, if they have any interest in it all. And that deals with, and if hopefully Ms. Callen will heal up and come in here a minute, because she'd kind of be part of this. Dealing with the Missouri education reform plan that DESI has put together in the State Board of Education, talking about their vision for the state of Missouri and public education, basically to be top ten nationally and internationally by 2020. And so they've, they've got a plan together, and, and I guess, I'm, I'm not sure how to, how we do this or if we want to do this, but I know with my discussions with Dr. DeCastro and, and even with the State Board, certainly they're not going to be able to do all this by themselves. So I mean, it's going to take a statewide effort to do this and support to make it happen. And so, you know, at some point, I don't know how we do it or, or the, the appropriate approach that we take with respect to some kind of support from this board or this community, more than anything, not just the board. But I mean, I think this is a community support, not just a school board support with what they're trying to accomplish. And, and I'm not going to try to go through the whole plan now. If you want to see it, it's on the DESI website, and it'll, it'll give you all the details. But I know the four things that, I'll just tell you what the four goals that they have are. One is ranking the top ten on national, international measures of performance, provide high-quality early education opportunities to all young children and their families, recruit, prepare, retain, and support effective teachers and leaders. And then DESI will improve departmental efficiency, operational effectiveness, and relations with internal and external customers, which is sort of an internal goal. So, you know, they've got a plan, they've got a lot of stuff that they want to do. You know, as, as most of you know, Missouri is right in the middle of performance nationwide. I mean, right smack dab in the middle. And so, which is not really acceptable. So, and I know the board is wanting to do something about that. So I, I just kind of want to throw that out on a table and maybe a future meeting, have a discussion or something. And I have, I, I've mentioned it to the chamber, and I've mentioned it to the city a little bit about the possibility of going together as a community in support of this. And so I just, I kind of want to throw it out on the table and see what you all thought about, if that made sense, if that's crazy or. I, I think it's pretty good. Goals that you're trying to do, you know, you've got to shoot for something. And right now, we're shooting for mediocrity, and that's not exactly. And, and Dr. DeCastro, she talked about, we just celebrated three hundred and twenty-three distinction of performance school districts out of five twenty-two. Is that good or is that bad? Is the bar not high enough? And that's what, that's her position was, if you've got that many, maybe the bar's not high enough.
That's pretty astonishing for a state that's mediocre.
Well, it depends on where your standards are. I, I, I mean, I'm not, not trying to make editorial comment, but I'm just, I just think that that's, you know, certainly a, a good goal to be top ten, and that I don't know what those standards would be to do that. So I, I, I just think we as a board need to have that discussion to, you know, are we in support of that? Is that consistent? You know, they're going to be talking about common core standards, which I know you all have looked at, and the state has looked at the difference between the show-me states, the show-me standards and the common core standards. And they're very, very close. There's not much difference, little higher, but not much.
I would say is the largest accredited district in the state, there's no way that we can't be a major player. Well, I know we are positioned to do so, but other than building a, beginning to think about building a list of other partners within the city beyond chamber, beyond city, there would be other perhaps components that could play.
Well, I, I just, I kind of want to get a feel from the board, if that's something that you thought would be good, productive, we can pursue it further and, and, and bring something back to the board, either more information, a more detailed presentation and, and the data for it. You know, I don't want to run this thing through, I just, I want to have the discussion and have the dialogue with the board to make sure we're all comfortable with it. But if that's something that this board is okay with, I, we can pursue that in whatever process we come up with, so.
I think that goes back to the philosophical or realistic, you know? If you're wanting to send back money, you know, and then yet we're going to do this. And I, I just think there's some real big pieces missing out of there, you know? Maybe it's a great first step, but I'd like to see some specifics on if we're talking about the state. Now, if we're talking about Springfield, we can talk about Springfield. But it's difficult for me to talk about this, the state of Missouri being in the top ten. That means probably some, some districts are pulling some others along, you know? So I think we, if we want to talk about Springfield and we're in control of that, there's just too many things to me at the state level anymore that we're not in control of. And then we see legislation that's going to take away our control. So I, I mean, it's a great goal, but I, I just think there's some real, I, I haven't seen those missing pieces yet. And maybe before I, if we want to adopt that as what we're doing, and we want to look at something we can do in Springfield to do that, but the state's got all kinds of missing pieces there that to me would throw a kink in, in the whole thing, you know? It's, it's, so I'm, if we want to talk about Springfield, I'm ready. If we're going to talk about the state, I really got other things I can do. Because I, I don't, I really don't see that we, they're throwing things in our way. And we're, we may be there already in some of these things, so they need to be talking to some other districts.
Well, and I, I can understand Bruce's position, but I think Gina's right that we're going to be kind of wrapped up in this regardless. And it seems to me that, that if we can have a part in driving it as opposed to, you know, obeying whatever mandates or policies come out of it, that's to our benefit. The other thing that I think, what little I know about some of the goals, one of the things that's, that's clearly could benefit us is the early childhood education piece. And, you know, if you have a statewide mandate or statewide support for that and some obvious, hopefully some money that, that follows that so that we can start plugging in more kids into early childhood education, that's going to help us, you know, K through twelve, regardless of what else happens with that, with that proposal. I guess what I'd like to know is, is, you know, what concrete steps are they thinking about, you know, next year, the year after? You know, in terms of, as opposed to just kind of, we want to be top ten, which is great. You know, New York had a situation where they had, they reported out those great reading numbers, and it turns out they just kind of dumbed down the standards. And they had great reading numbers, but when you really looked at it closely, nothing much had changed. So, you know, you, you got to be real careful about, about what you're measuring and whether what you're measuring actually is important. And so, but I, but I, but I think we, we do ourselves a disservice by not trying to kind of steer this where it goes, because we want it to dovetail with the stuff we're already doing. And, you know, we've done this work on the Twenty-First Century Skills, and, you know, we kind of have an idea where we want to be going in the future. And I would hope that that doesn't kind of knock us off that path. And that's, that's kind of an important component for, for how we deal with it, I think.
Well, I mean, if you look at the goals that they've got, they're not, they're very close to what our goals are. If you talk about early childhood, you talk about effective teachers and retaining effective teachers, you talk about student performance, student achievement, and efficient and effective use of resources. I mean, that's the four goals they've got, and those aren't far from ours. And so, and. Whether we like it or not, we are somewhat, well, not somewhat, we are a leader in the state. And they are, we are being looked at pretty closely as a leader in the state. And so I, and I think that's, I think it's great. And so I, I, I don't, I'm not saying we have enough information yet from Bruce's standpoint. I think that is a, a true statement. But that, my point was, do we want to pursue that and keep talking about that and do something with it? And that's, that's what I was really wanting to get a feel from the board. I think I've got that. I just wonder, and how we go about doing it, getting enough data in everybody's hands and what specifics we're talking about, we'll figure out how to make that happen down the road. If that's, if everybody's comfortable with that. I, I just wanted to have that discussion.
Sure, a couple of things for you, just real quick though, as far as math standards, Missouri leads the nation as far as the core standards around math. Which really kind of shocked me, I found that out about ten days ago. And then as far as communication arts, we're kind of middle of the road, maybe even a little bit subpar with that. And so, and then, of course, we're partnering and participating in a lot of the assessment discussions that are going on related to how we get the Missouri up to the top ten. So anyway, that's pretty much. We're trying to get our hands on it, just like you guys are right now. It's just really hard to find out where it's going, so, anyway.
Okay, I think we have enough on that one. Anything else, any others?
I don't know if anybody saw, but there's some pretty good menus in here.
Will anybody give you a copy of it?
Heavy cholesterol, some of these, some of these are really good.
Good food. Okay, moving on, in board docs is your financial operations report for, for Dr. Ritter.
I'm going to say something about that, thank you. I've been out in the public a lot lately, listening to people and, and hearing questions. And it's, it's obvious that the public, and I'm kind of directing this to our, our, our public relations staff, the public doesn't know how to find this information. Every single check that was written in the past, well, for February, is in fifteen point oh one, correct? All the bond account reports are in there. And every budget is in the webpage, district tab, click on budget. And so I think you, I don't know if you all get many calls, but I think it needs to be obvious to, to the public where to find this stuff, because we've heard about secret accounts and budgets and all that kind of stuff, and it's pretty much wide up, out there in the, in the public. I think just that, I needed to reinforce that.
Thank you. Just a reminder, plus deltas for the meeting. We do need to go into executive session. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
A move?
Motion by Dr. Prater, and a second by Ms. Twitty, the board meeting executive session. Following this meeting, discuss legal and personnel matters as provided in Section six ten oh twenty-one, one, three, and thirteen, RSMO. Charles.
Aye.
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 I'm going to try.
I would love to. I would love to give about a minute's spiel on the board and how we're handling the sides.
You need to kiss me up a little bit.
I'll be there. I will speak a little bit tomorrow at the principal's meeting.
I'll tell you what. And that way, it's a vice president of the board and not the board candidate. I just want, because, because if I'm going to be there, probably more spoken for me to talk rather than you. But if I'm not there.